Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special call meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. It's May 27, 6:02 PM. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
And make a motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Hoys, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. If you can, please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a relatively brief agenda today. First up is the fiscal year '26 budget presentation by Mr. Larry Hamel and Dr. Young. Teamwork.
We just had it. Hold on a second.
Teamwork makes the dream work, guys.
Got it.
Yep.
All right. I'm going to kick us off tonight with the first handful of slides, the first 87 or 88 slides, and then we'll shift to Larry. But before we begin, I just want to say a special thanks to our district staff is here, our cabinet members, Larry. This is something they've been working on since probably as far back as November, and they go through multiple iterations of it. And then as we get closer and closer, and the digest becomes more into focus, things become real, and they have been troopers throughout this whole thing, and I just want to just say publicly how much I appreciate them. Okay, so this is our proposed budget for FY '26. I just want to start off by saying the school system that we're proposing a budget for is doing pretty well. We have a great story to tell, and certainly that story has gone national with NICH and some other articles that have been done on us. And in NICH, they've got us ranked as the community with the number four school system in the nation. I'm not sure who the top three are, but we'll get them in our sights, and we'll work on that. But joking aside, we're very, very proud of the accomplishments. Those accomplishments come in multiple ways. Obviously, through our learner experience, we'll talk more about that later, but in our academic milestones, we've done very, very well. I'm not going to read each slide to you. You can see that. Advanced placement. This was, I think, the first time that all seven of our traditional high schools earned advanced placement honors from the Georgia DOE, and here's the variety of different honors that they received. So we're doing a great job of taking and challenging our kids to push themselves, and AP is always a great way to demonstrate that. Highest SAT and ACT in a variety of measures here. You've got three of our Forsyth County schools ranking the top 10 in Georgia, but when you look at the mean score in the state, we're at the top, and then when you look at the metro area, districts were at the highest of that as well with the ACT, Larry. Our graduation rate, we're still waiting, and we won't have this year's official numbers until probably close to September, but this is the graduation rate that we're all riding in here on this year. Ninety-six percent is a phenomenal graduation rate. I think this is particularly interesting because we do make a lot of investments in our school system, in career tech, in fine arts. Those students who complete a pathway in our school system, the graduation rate is 100%. And it is 99.97, went ahead and rounded that to 100 in fine arts, but the investments there are also paying off for our students that make their way through an entire fine arts pathway. And of course, you have in athletics, we've got our academics, we've got our fine arts. In athletics, this has been a banner year for state championships and region success, and I won't read through this list, but I think we actually, I think we could add a couple to this, maybe unless you got it updated, Michelle, but this I know was going right up until last week, we had some teams competing. So, great year for our athletic programs as well. This is one that I think we probably haven't highlighted enough to our community, but want to make sure we share this. That first number you see, and that has nothing to do with the HOPE grant, these are just scholarships that our students have received from individual scholarship programs and from universities. At the time this was put together, which was 520, and there's still more rolling in, $29.5 million in scholarships awarded. Then, when you calculate HOPE, now, not every student will stay in Georgia and take advantage of this, but if every student did, it would be over $32 million. So you're running at $61 million in scholarships for our graduating seniors. That's a pretty good return on investment for families. Of course, none of this happens without unbelievable staff and unbelievable teachers and paraprofessionals and counselors and bus drivers, and I think this is one that none of us saw coming, but we're all really proud of. When Forbes magazine came out with the top 100 best large employers, large company employers, and we ranked number five in Georgia, this was after, I think, like a 10-year study. We ranked fifth in Georgia and 89th in the nation among large companies. And that doesn't just happen. And when you look at retention data, retention data doesn't always point to money, but it points to the environment, it points to our clientele, and it points to leadership that we have in our schools and our district office. That's usually the number-one reason a person leaves teaching or the education field is because of the admin that they're working for. And so we've done a great job there. Recruitment and development, we have been able to retain this past year 95% of our employees, which is, any company would die to have those kind of numbers. And as you see here, we are the largest employer still in Forsyth County, 6,400 full-time, closer to 8,000 when you factor in all of our part-time staff as well. So, all that to say, we have an unbelievable school system. We're always looking to get better. We know there's a lot of ways we can improve academically, operationally, but this is not a broken situation. This is a really good situation, and it requires continued investment to keep us there and to move us to next levels, and that's what tonight's budget is all about. When we started working on the budget back in November, what you see on the right is our strategic plan areas. What you see on the left is really sort of the key budget-building objectives that we have, and when you look, they really align with each other pretty clearly. So when we go through this, you'll see us highlight the strategic plan areas, but embedded in that are the budget-building objectives as well. And I'm not going to read all these bullet points that you guys have. I'm sure the strategic plan area is memorized by now, so we'll move forward. The short summary of this budget is that we're proposing a $750.5 million total budget this year. That is a 5% increase over last year's budget. For this to go through, there would be no millage rate increases, and we would be providing a balanced budget to start FY '26. So, as you see in the upper-hand corner here, operational excellence, these are all of our strategic plan areas. So in the realm of operational excellence, responsible stewardship with our taxpayers' dollars is the key to this area. As I've said, no proposed increase of our millage rates for this year. They will remain at 15.208 if this budget's adopted. We did, in November this past year, our taxpayers voted in House Bill 717 to be the law of Forsyth County schools, and that includes a 4% cap on all reassessed homestead properties. As we said, we are not touching, have no intentions to touch, and have no intentions going forward of touching a senior tax exemption, so that remains in place for our senior residents. And as part of the stewardship, and I'll talk more about this a little bit, but we're going to be able to complete the Mashburn project debt-free, as promised to our taxpayers, when that was proposed a year ago. And over on the right, you can see our 10-year millage rate history. We continue to have the lowest millage rate in the metro Atlanta area, as we have since 2007, and you can see we're at the lowest we've been in 18 years. The operational excellence, the locally-controlled part of the budget, that's really what our staff has control over. And that budget, I'm really quite proud to say, is only increasing by 1.54%. That is far below even what the, I think, the Urban Consumer Price Index, which Larry and I have been looking at, is about 2.9%. We were able to come in and propose a budget increase of only 1.54% of the things we have control of. That came as a result of cost-saving measures. We did some district realignment this year when I was hired. That was one of the things that I had proposed to you in my interview process, that we could streamline some things, remove some redundancies, some duplicative duties that were going on. As this budget came out, we've tried to find some more areas, as you all joined the board, to continue to cut without touching services to students, I think it's really important to notice, to make note of, but some things at the district level more than anywhere else that we could find ways to cut. And I'm really proud of the staff out here, that they've done a tremendous job in doing that, proud of the process that Larry has in place to do that. We're able to do all of that and still, at the end of the day, maintain a fund balance of 15%, which is vital for future challenges that we may face. Credit goes to district leaders, it goes to the governance team for allowing this locally-controlled expenditures. We're going to be able to do the Mashburn thing, as I said. We're going to be able to continue paying down existing debt. We're going to be able to continue to cover the ever-never-ending, I should say, increases, it seems, in state-mandated healthcare requirements. And that is all because the folks that came before us had the forecasting and the foresight to build up a fund balance so that we could deal with any challenges that come at us like we're facing right now. And so, props to everybody who's been involved in this and for us for continuing to maintain In the realm of social and emotional health, we've got the following proposed investments in student safety. Increases in school psychologists, social workers, and student advocacy specialists to help bring down the student-to-professional ratios. And I do want to give a shout-out to our local delegation, our local state reps and senators, we met with them at our priority breakfast this year. We talked about this being one of the areas that we wanted some help in with our school psychologists and SASs in particular. We're going to have, I believe, three of our SASs get partial funding from the state that we've never had before, which I'm very thankful for. The school psychologist ratio number was lowered, so we're able to add in those areas which are vital to our students' social and emotional well-being. The sheriff's office in our system have partnered up, just as we have with SROs, to develop two threat assessment investigator positions with the increase of threats, real or fake or whatever you want to call them, across the country, and certainly what we've experienced here in Georgia. We felt like this was a vital area to help our administrative teams at the schools, to help our SROs, but to have two sheriff's deputies that are assigned full-time investigators to help, anytime we get a threat, y'all, anytime you get a threat, you treat it as though it's a very serious threat. That can be very taxing and difficult for administrators who are not trained as investigators to sort through that. So these two individuals, I'm really excited, are going to be very helpful for that. And then we're also, in this budget, able to reserve some money out for the mobile safety panic alert system that was a part of House Bill 268. We're still waiting for all the legal folks involved to tear that apart and look at it and give us model policies and give us guidance, but I think it would be really wise for us to set some money aside for whatever that's going to look like, and this budget allows us to do that. For the learner experience, we've been able to add to our academic achievement and accountability, and I want to just say that the district positions we've added this year, for the first time, at least in my history in this school system, every position we added had to come with an offset, and so there are no positions being added to the district office that we didn't first find other positions that we had collapsed or found redundancies and were able to eliminate or move them to another department and cut those down. So we were able to add a continuous improvement coordinator. We have a new evaluation system coming in this year. We're also just two years away from accreditation, and we have not since 2019, I believe, Amy. It's been since 2019 that we've been able to conduct our own internal audits, our own school audits. This position will allow us to do that. Assistant Director of Student Services, we were able to put a lot of coaches in place the last couple of years, but we're at the point where we need a coach over the coaches to direct their activities and to hold them accountable, and that position will help us do that with EIP, with EL, and we're excited about that spot. And then we've made investments in technology in this budget, in professional learning, in really some locally-developed instructional materials. We have found that the things that we've developed locally, particularly at elementary this last year, were more successful than the canned products or canned instructional materials that are out there, and so being able to develop those in-house also keeps us from falling prey to any third-party agendas that may exist out there, as we've all uncovered over the last several years. There's a lot of agendas when it comes to textbook writing and material writing. This will help give us a little bit more internal control of that. Staff recruitment and development, in this budget, we are asking for a salary step for all eligible staff. We're asking that a step be added to the end of the salary schedules for eligible staff. This was something we did last year for the first time. As most folks know, most of our employees are able to retire at 30 years of service, but our salary schedule only went to year 25 last year, and so we find that we lose people in their last five, six years, they'll go somewhere to bump up their retirement. So we made the commitment last year of adding a step and really kind of pushing that message. I think it's one thing that's really important to note to our staff that are watching this and as we have our conversation with principals. This is not something that we can just count on happening every year. I think the salary step, I think, is certainly what we would expect. The added year to the end of the salary, we certainly want to make that a priority when finances will allow for it, and our goal is to get to 30 years, but I just want to make sure that people don't come away thinking that that's an automatic from year to year. That's a commitment that'll have to be made year to year based on our financial situation. This year, as Larry and I have analyzed this, we believe the financial situation warrants this. We'll continue to invest our own pipeline with our teacher academy. Our partnership with the University of Georgia continues to grow at the teacher residency program there, which allows us to pay folks during their student teaching, and continued investment that we have in our robust teacher and leader development programs. Culture, climate, and community, the key to this is how do you continue to make a large system feel small, and it's all about the people that you attract and that you train and you put into place. Here's a variety of folks that don't always make the headlines, but we have committed in this school system to hire more of these than are necessarily funded or allotted for so that we can continue to make sure that we've got adults in the building, that they're the right adults, working with our kids. And we would argue that, yeah, there's always a bad apple or two out there, you can't have 8,000 employees and that not happen, but I would tell you that we are really proud of the vast majority of our folks that come to work every day committed to being there for our kids. And certainly, we've got some things very unique to Forsyth County schools that help our large system feel small. I've mentioned this before, but we have school resource officers in every school. That is not the case across Georgia, but that has become one of our community expectations that we end up having to foot the bill for, but it's a community expectation that I think a lot of communities should have. Same with nurses in every school. That's not the norm everywhere. And then we've got, of course, our student advocacy specialists who have literally saved countless lives in our community because of their connection with kids. So those are unique to FCS, but things that we want to continue to invest in for the well-being of our kids and families. Now, that's all having to do with locally-controlled pieces of our budget. That was the 1.54% of our budget increase out of the 5%. Three and a half percent increase is out of our hands at state-mandated costs. These are things that, if we didn't raise one salary schedule, add one year, invest in one SAS, any of those things, if we did none of that and had a zero increase in what we could control locally, we would still be looking at a 3.46% increase just based on state-required expenditures, predominantly in state healthcare premiums and the teacher retirement system. Just this year alone, we're looking at $22.3 million increase, 16.3 of that with healthcare alone. And if you look at this historically, I think this is quite a tale, look at the increases that we faced with state healthcare and TRS costs. This year's budget, which I said is $750 million that we're proposing, $207 million of that is for state-mandated healthcare and TRS costs. Another thing that doesn't get mentioned a lot, but I think is definitely worth putting out there, I'm not going to pass judgment on this, I'm just going to pass the facts on this, but it is, a lot of people may not be aware of out there, but it's by state law, every public school system has what's called their five mil share, the amount of money that equals five of our local mills. We live in a community that's been very blessed in our resources and our home values, so our five mills this year are worth in excess of $100 million. That five mil share is money that basically goes to the state for use throughout the rest of the state. So it's $100 million of Forsyth County taxpayer dollars that go out there to be redistributed to school systems throughout the state of Georgia. Again, I'm not saying that's a, I'm not passing judgment on whether that's the right thing or the wrong thing, it just is. Every system has to pay into that, but a lot of systems throughout the state of Georgia get some of that money back in the form of equalization or other things. In our case, we don't see any of that money back. And if you take a look at this chart, it shows how our fair share has gone up tremendously over the last 10 years. And so when you look at the FY '26 budget, just to give you a quick break, 73% of our school's operating budget goes into instruction, which is all about our commitment to student learning and classroom support. We sometimes, and this may sound a little defensive, and I'm not trying to be defensive, I just want to get the facts out there, but sometimes we're talked about our overhead and a bloated admin or district officer service, but 73% goes to instruction, and then you can see how the rest of this is divided out amongst the other operations that you have to have an effect. And I put this slide out there and appreciate Michelle and Larry putting this together as a visual because it really does tell the story. I mean, you have to have administrators at school, you have to have buses, you've got to have your central office support, pupil services, and certainly your facilities of maintenance. So I think we're doing very, very well in terms of stewarding our taxpayers' dollars when you see it broken down like this. So Larry, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to get into the weeds.
Thank you. I just want to thank Michelle. She helped me a lot. I provided the raw numbers. She did all this great artistic adaptation, trying to take my numbers and turn it to something visually nice to look at. I know that's a hard thing to do. So tonight, we're going to talk about the 2026 budget, and the first two things I really just want to pop out there is the breakdown between how much of our budget will be local versus state and federal. So we're about 53.3, and that trend has slowly been going up in that direction for the last several years, and 46% is only coming from, or 47% is only coming from state and federal. So if we look at the number side of this, you can see that from 2025 budget to 2026 budget, we're going up about $35.7 million, or about 5%. And the breakdown you can see is about a $22.3 million increase on the local and only about 13.4 on the state side. Now, when we start breaking down into how those numbers come together, this is the further breakdown of the local versus the state. So for local, we're looking at $352 million in EVLORE, about 24.5 for TVAT, and tangible is about 5.5. Real estate transfer taxes, a little over 3. Interest income is 8, and that number is a good number mostly because the rates are going to stay inflated during the '26 tax period, I mean fiscal year. Tuition's about 550, other local revenue 6, and surplus sales is going up just because we're in the middle of the FFE transition out of Splo 6, where we're buying the new equipment and moving out the other. With KBE, we earned $343.4 million, $2 million of that's for midterm. We've got about $6 million in other state sources, about $350,000 in federal indirect cost, and about 500 for flood control funds in lieu of taxes. So for a total of about $750.5 million. Now, when we look further down on the two main sources of revenue we get through the state, both locally and state, our tax revenues, now, these are very basic numbers that we've been given. We don't have the final tax digest yet, but we're looking at about $23.8 million in net digest with a 15.28% millage rate, should generate about $361, almost $362 million. Now, once the commission's taken out by the Tax Counselors Office, will be about 352.8. The last two years, we've been collecting about 102% collection rate. Before that, we're using about 99.5 collection rate. We're moving it up to 99.84 for a grand total of $352.3 million, or about a 7.16% over last year's collections. KBE formula, you can see, is 341, $2 million for midterm, for a total of 343, or about 12.4 over last year. Now, when we look in terms of how the expenses are looked at, the biggest category, of course, year after year, and has been going up percentage-wise every year, has been salaries and benefits. A lot of the reasons we've gone from about 85, 86 to 90 is because of the state health cost and the TRS cost. Right now, operations only represent about 9.6% of our budget. If you want to look at a breakdown, again, more detail with actual numbers, you can see here that, once again, instructional is 73%, and we can see we go all the way down to debt service at .32. The debt service, the .32, that's actually the money we pay for the Alliance Academy that was built several years ago, and we still got several years of payments left on that. Now, when we dive into the actual expenditure details, as you see going from left to right, we have the '26 budget versus the '25 budget, the increase and decrease between those particular years, and the percentage total increases about 4.99. Last year's budget was balanced to the penny, zero, and this year, we're slightly above revenue-wise, about $15,000, almost $16,000. You can see the actual increase is about 35.6. Two things I do want to point out, you notice there's a big decrease in pupil services versus improvement of instructional services. As part of that reorganization, when we moved stuff from different people and under different people, one of the things that happened was student support moved out from TNL and kind of moved over to TODS, so we had to do some adjusting in terms of how that money was spent and where it was spent from. That's why those two looked inverse like that. Now, if we get down to the actual details between salaries and benefits, excuse me, salaries and operations, you can see that the salary benefits is about $678 million versus operation of about 72, for a total of 750. And again, versus last year, it's about a $36 million increase of 4.99. What we do want to show you though is if you look at the breakdown of that 4.99, you can see that 16 million of it is healthcare, 6 million is TRS, and then the portion of the school allotment that was increased by state is 2.3 for a total of 3.46. What we can control with the school allotment as well is about 2.7 versus budget increase of about 8, and that total is about $10 million over 1.54 for the total of 4.99. Fund balance details, we start the year off July 1st with about $172 million, currently projecting an expenditure over revenue of about 2.6 on the cash flow analysis as we get closer to the year-end close. That would give us an estimated fund balance of $169 million with a 15% increase, excuse me, $15,000 increase before any reserves. We have the current reserve of about $31 million for debt service that we approved back in '23. We have the initial $8.3 million reserve for Mashburn from last year, and initially we're proposing an additional 10.9 to finish out that Mashburn project with a '26 proposed budget, as well about 4.5 as an initial down payment on the safety security budget bill. The only problem is we don't know exactly what that's going to call us, cost us, so we went ahead and put this 4.5 as a placeholder for now. call us, cost us, so we went ahead and put this 4.5 as a placeholder for now. That's a '26 proposed reserve.
And Larry, that 31 million, just for the public to understand, when that was down in FY '23, that was so that we could lower the millage rate by a full mill, correct?
Correct.
On the debt side?
Yes, we went from 2.418 down to 1.418. So with $114 million and a half projected at the end of '25, excuse me, that should be the end of '26, I'll change that. That should be a 15.26% fund balance. A couple of other things we need to talk about tonight besides the budget is the debt service. Right now, we have about $659,000 in debt service based on projected income coming in versus the payments for debt interest and principal next year. We should end the year with about 6.7. There's a dip in the payments this year, then they go back up about 46, 47 million. That's just the way it worked out in the payment schedule. Food nutrition, last year, we had a deficit built in of about 2.6. Todd, are you here?
Yes.
Right now, we're on part of, almost breakeven this year, right? We're getting close?
Our revenues are...
As our latest state reports, our revenues are likely be in the negative this year based on the cost of health insurance, based on the cost of food, and based on the fact that our food costs, what we're charging our families, has not increased for the last four years. So we all know what the price of food has been like over the past four years, but luckily we've been able to keep our prices for our families the same during that time. So we look like we're probably going to be, we'll end up the year in the negative likely. It's hard to project out though because our numbers are always lagging. We probably will have, you know, we'll have final numbers in like late July.
Do you think it's going to be the 2.6 or less, though?
I think it'll be less than 2.6.
That's what I thought, okay.
We were right. Last time we had solid numbers, we were about 1.9 plus, but the amount of food we were selling was going up second semester.
So with that being said, we project a $5.5 million deficit in that particular budget for '26. Now, part of the reason is, is based on the talks I had with Todd and Donna, is they were seeing a lag in the number of meals that were being sold, and unfortunately, the cost of food's gone up. And of course, also with school nutrition as well, their costs for TRS is up and healthcare as well. So we're just going to watch that, you know, going forward month by month. The other budgets we want to talk to you about is the cap of projects. So you can see we're predicting about $62 million in collections from SPOS funds. We're going to transfer out about $14 million. I think that's debt service. We're transferring in $16 million from general fund to finish up the Mashburn project, and we should end up the year with about $67 million. If you look at the special revenue column, in there includes the school nutrition budget, which you see at the bottom, you can see excess revenue over expenditures of 5.5. The rest of the activity in there, the 37.49 and the 42.9, minus this activity right here of 22.7 and the 28.2, are just all the federal programs that we will have next year, Title I, Title II, and et cetera. And then for the rest of the year, right now, we do have a called meeting this Thursday at 5 o'clock for the first budget hearing. We'll have our second called meeting on June 12th for the second budget meeting. At this time, I do not have the necessary documents from the tax office to set up a millage hearing number one for the 12th. I believe I should have it by the 19th, which means we'll have to postpone the June 12th millage unless something happens very soon, and then have a different meeting for that. And then the 19th, we're also scheduled to approve the budget. We may have to hold off approving the millage, though, to a different date as well. Any questions?
Well, not a question, but I want to publicly say thank you very much, Dr. Young, Larry, everybody in this room. I know that it's been a process these last few weeks, and we, as a board, put, I think, big demands and expectations on you guys, and you really stepped up to the plate. I think a 1.54% annual increase in what we control is phenomenal. I mean, I think that's the envy of any school system out there, and while still performing at very high levels and still hitting all of our, you know, strategic priorities. So I just want to say I'm personally very grateful for it. You know, we know that we're in some kind of uncharted territories here with the 4% cap. So I thank you guys truly for rising to the occasion, and I think this is a very solid budget that I'm personally, I'm very happy with. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I would just second it, and I know that this hasn't been easy, and this will be my seventh one. I think this is probably the lowest increase in probably the school's history. I mean, I don't think it's ever been this low. And, you know, maybe if you look at a graph that shows the increase and see it, you can show, especially we're in the increase in students, right? And so, just a great job for that. I think there's also a lot of heartburn for us where we talk about the five-mill share, some of the expenses put on the school system. You know, a lot of people don't know about the five-mill share. And one of the things that makes it unique to Forsyth County is that our mill is worth more than any other county in state, so we're paying more. And so, that's $100 million going throughout the state, you know, to other school systems. And that actually is allowing those school systems to lower their millage rate to down to 10. They can lower their millage rate down to 10 and receive funds from Forsyth County to help their community. And, you know, that's a state decision, and it's just some of the things that we have to put out there and say, hey, look, we just got to, you know, we got to pay it. We don't have a choice. And so, having our control of 1.54% increase is just phenomenal. I mean, you guys couldn't have done a better job, so thank you.
And one thing that I forgot to say, sorry, Chris. When we told Dr. Young, I think he thought we were kidding when we told him if, you know, we were going to add positions to the central office, it would have to be a one-to-one swap. He kind of chuckled, and he looked at us like, are you being serious? And we're like, yeah, we're being serious. And you guys made it happen, and I'm very grateful for that. I don't know that any other school system out there is doing what we're doing here to be fiscally responsible and do right by the taxpayer and also by our system, so thank you.
And just to piggyback off that, one of the things we talked about is that you have quality-based education that's provided by the state, right? Provided to all the school systems. It's a quality. Then we have the community expectation of Forsyth County, and that's where the local share is coming in, but it's also where we have the resource officers in every school. We have nurses in every school. We have SASs, the psychologists. Those are all community demands that we have to, you know, that they have of us, and the parents and teachers and principals have of us. So you have your state, and then you have your Forsyth County quality, and we're meeting all of those with this budget.
Well, and I'd say, I think as those of us who are new have come on, we've learned a lot through the budget process. And Dr. Young, you hit on it about the salary step. And I think it's important that we, something you said, I kind of want to unpack just a little bit, and that is, the teachers that hit that year '26, if they were to stay year '27, '28, '29, '30 right now, and we approved the step, they would get nothing. And so, that makes other, you know, to your point, and I think that's important that we look at because we want to keep good teachers. We want to keep, you know, experienced teachers in our classrooms as much as we can. And so, I think that's a really important piece that, you know, that we keep in mind. And also, I had done some talk to Mr. Hamel and Dr. Young about the healthcare costs. And, you know, obviously, we all see it's going up. We are, you know, and I'll say it, like I asked if we could go out and look and, you know, get bids on healthcare, kind of like other businesses do. Unfortunately, that has some ripple effects with retirement, and so, it's just something to, when we look long-term, it's not quite as easy as a normal business would be.
So thank you all, because I know there was a lot of work that went into this. So I really appreciate that. This being my first opportunity to go through this process, we definitely learned a lot, and I'm thankful for everyone being available for the questions, the many questions that we had along the way. And I think, you know, the more that we go through this process, it'll continue to be refined further. But I just want to say thank you for all of your efforts.
And I'll also add a thank you. You guys have been great in answering the millions of questions that I have, and, you know, learning this process as we go. But we have put a lot of big demands on you guys, and you've really stepped up to the plate and made it happen, so thank you.
And I do want to say one other thing, and this is really for you three, in that, and I know Wes feels the same way. We're really proud of you guys. I mean, you guys worked really hard on this budget. You were super engaged, that you had a lot of questions. You did your homework, you know, you really were kind of like the exemplary new board member for this process. He's a vet, he's done it seven times. This is my third one, but you guys really, I promise you knocked it out of the park, and I'm very grateful that you took it so serious and you did your part. And also, you as well, Dr. Young. I know this is the first one that you're taking, you know, beginning to end as our superintendent, and I think it's been a great process. I know it'll only get better from here, but I'm very grateful.
No, I appreciate the kind words from everybody. You know, at the beginning of this, we talked about trust your people, work your process, stick together, and you all have modeled that for us, and we appreciate that. Part of trusting your people when you're new is understanding the process, and that can only come through questions. And I would just tell you, we joke a little bit about the questions, but the questions make us better. Accountability makes you better. And having questions that you haven't had in a few years, and we've got a lot of new people out there as well, you know, all joking aside, those questions have been helpful for us to bring our best to the table as well. So I echo what Mike says, particularly to our three new board members. We don't always show it, and maybe the minute we get the question, we don't necessarily smile, but we do appreciate it because it's making us better. And that's, we have to model that for our principals and everybody else that we talk about the importance of accountability. And so, we welcome that, and we thank you for it.
All right. If there's nothing else, I think we can release Mr. Hamel, who's sitting here staring at us. He wants to go have a seat. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. All right. If there's nothing else, then we will go ahead and go into executive session for personnel. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Usherwood or a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you tomorrow.